We'll call a Shakopee City Council meeting for December 3rd, 2024 to order. If you could please take the roll.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Delaney?
Here.
Councilmember Whiting?
Here.
Councilmember Contreras?
Here.
Councilmember Lara?
Here.
Mayor Lehman?
Here. Item number three, if you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number four, approval of the agenda, any changes, council or staff?
Nothing from staff, sir.
Council? Mr. Lara?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second it.
Motion is seconded by Contreras. Any discussion on the motion? Discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item number five, consent agenda, any changes to the consent agenda?
No changes, sir, but I will say that on 5E, we will have a forthcoming maintenance agreement for the two scoreboards. You can expect that at the next meeting. 5E.
5E, okay. I'd like to take 5A off. Anything else, Mr. Whiting?
Make a motion to approve the consent business as modified, our consent agenda.
Second?
Second.
Discussion of the motion? Mr. Reynolds, you want to read the consent agenda, please?
Yes, sir. These are the consent agenda items for Tuesday, December 3rd. 5B approves an on-sale and Sunday liquor license for Mr. Pig Stuff LLC doing business as Mr. Pig Smokery. 5C is a road maintenance agreement for 160th Street with Spring Lake Township. 5D awards the 2025 tree pruning contract. 5E accepts a donation of two scoreboards from the Shakopee Youth Football Association. 5F accepts a monetary donation as part of donations from the HART program. 5G is the FEMA's Assistance to Firefighters Grant application. 5H is the final acceptance and payment for the Lift Station 16 rehabilitation project. 5I closes, is the closing of the Small Cities Development Program Special Revenue Fund. 5J is the final acceptance and payment for the TH 169 pedestrian bridge improvements. 5K is a declaration of surplus property. 5L is the National Recreation and Park Association Supporting Healthy Aging Through Parks and Recreation Grant Award. 5M approves a temporary on-sale liquor license for Hockey Day Minnesota 2025. And 5N is approval of the state legislation specific to Shakopee for social districts.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. We do have a motion and a second. Discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item number six, public comments. If there's anybody here that would like to address the city council on a matter not on the agenda, now would be the time to do so. Second call, if there's anybody here that would like to address the council on an item not on the agenda, now would be that time.
Staff can jump in here if they want.
Seeing none, excuse me, we'll move on to item number seven, business removed from the agenda. Consent agenda, I took off 5A. Are we limiting two, two of these businesses across the city, or are we, is that exactly what we're doing?
Mayor, I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Are we, are we, is this proposing to limit no more than two pawn shops in the city?
So that's correct. So we currently have two, and we would keep two.
And why would we not want to let businesses function by the free markets?
So mayor and council, currently, the way the ordinance says, you would allow another one when we hit 50,000. So currently, they're regulated already by code, so we're limited to two right now.
Okay, this says one per 15, so that would be three for 45.
Forty-five, I'm sorry, yes. We're going to approach 45,000 probably next year.
Right. I'm just not a fan of, Mr. Whiting?
I can add a few comments why we'd want to limit it. I mean, every transaction, our police department has to look at, and I know we have a little token fee, but I don't think it covers the diligence that we've got to put into everything that gets put through those shops. There's added calls, I would guess, you know, other things like that. So there is some scrutiny there. And then there's also the potential or possibility that stolen merchandise gets somehow pawned through there. And with gambling facilities in our area, we don't want to add to that opportunity for people to have an issue with that, I guess. So there's some, there's some ideas why we'd want to limit it.
Well, I look at other businesses. I'll take alcohol, for example. 200,000 people a year killed from alcohol. DWIs are up 25%. Kids under the age of 14, that's killed by alcohol is up by 25%. And yet, there's a cost for us to do, to deal with that issue also, but we don't limit that. So I disagree with trying to ban legitimate legal businesses within the city. I think the market should dictate that. There's not a need, and they can't make, you know, if the, if the fees need to go up to cover the costs, then so be it, but that's my feeling on it, so.
I have a question. Is there applicant that we're barring at this point?
Mayor and council, no. And the other thing is, if you read the state statute, so you take an item that's worth $500, typically they'll loan a percentage of the value, so typical loan is $150, and it's 3% interest a month plus fees. So it's not considered, I think, a good lending model for the community. I think the councilmember Whiting's point is, we already have a casino racetrack and card room. Those are people that are short of money are going there to basically get their money. And there are a number of cities that basically, the state statute allows us to regulate them any way we want, and there are cities outside of this area that basically abandon them because of what councilmember Whiting said, they tend to be not a good business for the community as far as their usury rates are pretty high. I mean, they're limited by state statute to 3% a month.
Yet ours don't come before us with any major violations over all the years either, so. Mr. Delaney?
I was going to say, we've had two in the last 20-plus years, that's all that's been in the city? Two businesses?
Councilmember, I couldn't hear you.
There's only been like two pawn shops in the city in the last 20-plus years.
Mayor and council, the police chief can address it probably better than I, because I haven't been here that long, but there was actually a moratorium at one point, and council decided to settle on two because there was a lot of concerns.
And then, Mr. Lara?
Go ahead. I can ask later.
Okay. The other question I had is, when I looked down, secondhand dealers, are these also affected, or are these not, and then hand dealers, or are these not affected?
Mayor and council, secondhand dealers, the only ones that are affected are the standalone. So currently, we do not allow, except for food trucks, businesses to operate in people's parking lots on a regular basis, and we have one pretty significant secondhand dealer that's plopped in a parking lot. It's a shipping container that people put their goods into. It's a for-profit business. So basically, if you want to have one of those, so if you're Goodwill and you want to have a Goodwill box, you need to have a location there, which is what Goodwill does. But otherwise, they would not be allowed.
Couldn't we just modify the ordinance to say that?
Mayor and council, that's what this is doing.
Limiting the number of businesses, so.
Mayor and council, there's two things in this bill. One is limiting pawn shops to two. The second thing is, you have to have a primary location to be a secondhand merchant.
Okay, what does that do to fireworks sales out of parking lots?
Fireworks sales get a temporary permit from the fire department.
Okay.
And they're allowed by state statute.
And could hand dealers get a temporary permit?
Secondhand.
Pardon me?
Secondhand, or could they get a temporary permit?
No, so.
We don't operate.
So we don't allow businesses just to show up and set up in a parking lot. They have to be a business.
So fireworks is good, sweet corn is okay, secondhand dealers not.
Fireworks are regulated by state statute.
Right. And sweet corn? Sweet corn?
Sweet corn is probably regulated by the agriculture department.
I think that is, that is its own thing.
All right.
And the difference is, is all those things you've described, Mr. Mayor, are all temporary. This, the secondhand drop boxes are not temporary. They basically are there full-time.
They're 365 days a year, 24 hours a day.
Mr. Lara?
So I'm, I'm curious to have input from the police department as to, like, their opinions on the pawn shops, and if they're burdensome, if there's any issues, nuisances, that's, I'm curious about that.
Mayor and council, I don't remember what year it was, but I do remember the moratorium and bringing that before you, and that was that we were going to have two pawn shops. And this was popular at the time around the metro in terms of limiting the number of pawn shops that a city had. And we, it was the 45,000 that another one could essentially come in and buy another license. I think we are unique that we have two gambling, or multiple gambling venues close by. And it is work for us. It's no secret, people steal stuff and they go pawn it off, and it's, it's instant cash. If I'm being brutally honest, we have not had the staff to go in and properly audit the current two pawn shops that we have. You know, I'd like to do a lot more surprise inspections and show me where your, you know, this is being recorded properly and so forth. We did see violations when we did that before, so that is something, as we get fully staffed and everybody off of field training, I hope we get back to. But it's, it's no secret. I mean, people go there and pawn stuff that they stole. That doesn't mean everything on the shelves is, but it is, it is workload for us, for sure.
So aren't they required to check items they take in to make sure they're not on a stolen items list?
Mayor, they're supposed to, yes.
Okay.
Have we been checking them to make sure that they're not? No.
They're not checking, or we're not checking?
We're not checking. We're not checking their work.
Okay. But they're, they're doing what they're required to do, checking it in, checking to see if it's stolen, see if it's on a list of stolen items?
And they're supposed to also record, you know, certain things, get the, all the identification, driver's license, you know, verify that person's ID that's, that's pawning the, you know, it's regulated in terms of how the information that they have to collect. But, you know, we've had some, some ups and downs depending on who is running the pawn shop.
That's true.
Over the, over the years, that's not, I'm not saying that today, but it, we have had issues in the past.
Correct me if I'm wrong, there's a token fee for each transaction?
There is a fee. Mayor and council, I remember, this was quite controversial back, you know, 10 years ago or so. Some cities were really bumping the fee up, and all of the pawn shops, Burnsville in particular is one that I think of, that there was quite an outcry from, from those dealers, whether it was the gold guys or Pawn America and so forth. And they pushed back, and Burnsville wound up taking those fees out, so now they didn't, they don't collect any fees. I don't know if they still don't, but they took them out back then, so there was a big push on those fees, and any, any increase to those fees, I think would get significant push, pushback from those businesses.
But the fees were to compensate us for the police work that we're, we don't have the time to do.
The, the fees compensate for part of that, but also pay for the, the system that they put the, Minneapolis runs it.
Enter each item into?
Yes.
Does city staff know what our fee is?
Mayor and council, I think it's a dollar, is it a dollar fifty?
Fifty per transaction.
Transaction. And it's been that since the inception.
Wishes of council?
Have we ever considered increasing that?
The fee?
Yeah.
It's a staff question. Has staff considered increasing the per-transaction fee?
Mayor and council, we looked at that again several years ago. It had to be almost 10 years ago. And every city that did that, there were newspaper articles about the pushback that, you know, was coming before council when that happened. I don't, I don't, some of them have higher fees than us, but when we've looked at it, Mayor and council, we've kind of been in the middle. You know, that's kind of where we've always stood. I have not looked at that for years. But we, the last time we did was probably six, seven years ago, and we were, that dollar fifty is right in the middle of about where everybody else was.
They're the, they're not the norm in the world, because everybody, through inflation, is raising prices on everything, so this is kind of weird to me that this would be an issue of 10 years and no fee increase through inflation.
I would add, if, if we did increase the fee, I would expect that we would increase the diligence on spending that fee, you know, but if we don't have the staff, why would we increase the fee?
From my perspective, we could only have, currently, we could only have one more. And then it would be 60,000 before we'd see another one. So it's, it's pretty gradual, but the secondhand dealer issue is a, is a separate issue. And I think what you're trying to accomplish there is to not have these charity boxes around town, right?
The nuisance ones.
Or you want the charity boxes at a location that actually has a storefront where somebody could go inside also, right?
That's correct, Mayor.
Okay. So couldn't we just change that to make that a requirement, that it has to be in a location with a storefront that?
So Mayor and council, it's up to your option. You could adopt the portion of the ordinance that only affects secondhand dealers.
I'm going to make a motion to adopt ordinance 02024, tag 009, amending Title 11 of the city code, amending section 113.05 related to pawn shop licensing requirements. The reason in move is adoption, and if I can comment on that.
As soon as you get a second, you'll be the first speaker. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Mr. Whiting?
The reason is, because we can, if a third, after we hit the 45,000, and a third person, a group comes that wants to have a pawn shop, they could lobby us, and we could change this ordinance again.
Okay. Any, Mr. Delaney?
Can we modify this to leave the pawn shops as is? I mean, if you want to hit 45,000, that puts you at three. I don't think that's a very lucrative business, since I'm not aware of it being. So it seems like we're kind of jumping the gun, just to kind of limit it once we get 45,000 population. But I'm okay with part of what we're proposing, but not the, the limit on free market.
Mr. Thompson?
Mr. Mayor, yes, the answer is yes, but you need to act on the motion on the table first before, and if that passes, it passes. If it doesn't pass, then someone can make another motion to adopt just a portion of it.
Or you could make an amendment to the original motion, and then the motion maker and second would have to accept that.
Yeah, you could, that might be a little, yes, you could do that.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I got, I have more questions for staff.
Lara, go ahead.
Are they zoned, or pawn shops zoned specifically? Do they have to be fit in a specific area?
Mayor and council, I believe they're allowed in B1.
Highway business?
Yeah, which is just about any of the retail areas in the city except for downtown.
The only thing that worries me is that if we adopt a block, just two, or we don't do it, and then they come to us to say, hey, I want to open up a pawn shop in Shakopee, and then we decide to not do it, I mean, that's kind of setting up, like, well, we'll let these two in, but not you guys, when we have the opportunity to just not do it at all now. Does that, does that make sense? What I'm trying to say is, I just would hate to not adopt it, and then when they do come, when a third one does want to come to us, and then we're like, yeah, no, never mind. It's like, we either do it now, or we don't do it. And then let them in when they come, because we would have no reason to not.
Hold them to some standards.
And Mayor and council, there are other, that, so you have the 3% fee, the dollar fifty fee on top of every, on top of the items that are pawned, plus the pawn stores are also allowed to have their own fees, so it's sort of, I think, the reason why there's always pushback on city raising their fees is you're already kind of at a usury rate for people that are desperate for money, and now you're charging them more money, so actually getting less money.
Well, if they didn't like the fee increase, they could stop doing business and go somewhere else, right? That's how the free market works.
It's the desperation of the people.
Instead, what we're going to do is, we're going to make these two licenses very, very attractive to be sold out at a high price to somebody else to stay under the two minimum. So if I was an owner of one of these licenses, you'd be sitting on a gold mine.
I don't think a pawn shop has ever been called a gold mine.
A license would be.
We can block, be able to block it easier by doing this now, and if somebody comes to us with another pawn shop, we can show this, they'd have to lobby us to change this at that time, and then we could hold them to whatever.
First, if another one came forward, they would have to meet the population requirements that we currently have. If, if it was premature, then it would be easy to say no, because it would be premature based on population.
This would stop it.
So. All right. Any other discussion? Are we ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. Motion passes three to two. All right, that brings us to item 8A, which is a public hearing, 2025 budget and property tax levy, public meeting and presentation. Motion to open a public hearing, Councilor Contreras?
Mayor, make a motion to open the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
Think about Mr. Delaney. Discussion on the motion, seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Public hearing is now open.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. So tonight, we have a public hearing on the 2025 proposed budget as well as proposed property tax levy. The, okay, I'm sorry. The city annually adopts a budget and property tax levy for the upcoming year. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to provide the public with information on the city's 2025 proposed budget and 2025 proposed property tax levy, and allows the public a chance to comment on the proposed property tax and levy prior to their adoption. The $1 bill shown on the slide shows the breakdown of property taxes based on preliminary levies for a homeowner here in Shakopee. The portion we are discussing tonight is the city levy, which represents 26.3% of property taxes paid, so only about a quarter of your property tax bill funds city operations. And we don't have any influence over the portion of property taxes paid to the county or the school district. Similar to assessed values, those are determined by the county assessor's office. Again, the city does not have influence or control over those. Generally speaking, our budget objectives remain unchanged from the previous few years, while, which include continuing to be one of the lowest tax communities in the metro, continuing to grow our tax capacity of existing and new property. We'll continue to be transparent and make decisions with the future in mind to ensure the city's ongoing ability to provide quality services at a reasonable price. As we went through the budget process, we posted budget information on our website. I've included this presentation as well as our full draft of the budget book as well as on the website. And then, of course, we have our award-winning budget transparency tools, which include the budget board that sits outside the city council chambers, and then our property tax payer receipt tool, which is on the website, where you can enter in your, the value of your home and see exactly what your property taxes pay for. The tool is still available for 2024 property taxes, and will be updated in the next few months when we get the final 2025 tax rate. I added this model this year that depicts the sustainable cycle of city government. At the forefront of that cycle is ensuring that we provide high-quality services, which continues to maintain that cycle. The model illustrated sets high-quality services as the foundation of a healthy and growing community, and shows where external forces and government action might intervene. Those high-quality services drive population growth as more people and businesses want to relocate to our community. Population growth drives real estate values, both in existing and new, new value. The growth in real estate values ensure rising tax revenues, which pays for the inflation cost of our high-quality services while keeping a minimal impact on existing property tax rates. The cycle is the foundation of our annual budget development and helps identify and explain influencing factors. Our role in the cycle is to ensure that we're providing those high-quality services, influence the mix of property types between industrial, residential, and commercial, and then determine the appropriate mix of paying for those services, whether it's property taxes or user fees. There were several steps city staff and city council have taken to get us up to this point, including meetings on the city's long-term financial plan, capital improvement, and budget. The city also hosted a budget listening session, open to the public at the beginning of the process. The preliminary levy was adopted on September 17th, and then per state statute, our final levy cannot increase from that preliminary levy, it can only stay the same or decrease. From a staff perspective, we're really happy with how this budget came together and what it accomplishes. We've seen 8.5% growth in taxable market value, 38% coming from new construction, which has limited the impact on existing owners. Based on the county assessment numbers for 2025, our tax rate will see very little change from where it is today. And today, we're one of the lowest communities in the state, with ours being the 11th lowest out of 103 cities in the state with population greater than 10,000. The 2025 budget includes significant investment in public safety and streets, which has been a significant driver of other communities as well across Minnesota. 2025 will be our second year of our phased-in increase of two patrol officers that we added with last year's budget. We have settled our police union contracts for 2024, 25, and 26. We've transitioned from paid-on-call to a hybrid full-time, part-time staffing model by adding additional full-time positions in 2024, as well as proposing a new full-time fire inspector position in 2025. And for streets, we propose to add additional 500,000 of annual funding to help support the cost of maintaining those existing streets. There are 32 cities in the metro with population between 25,000 and 100,000, based on the most recent Met Council population estimates. The below chart provides the 2023 city property taxes for those cities, calculated using the League of Minnesota City's Property Tax Calculator, which is updated with information each fall. So this chart has been updated since the last September, but the data shows that we're one of the lowest taxes, tax communities in the metro. The Department of Revenue website provides all the preliminary levies statewide for cities and counties. So the slide shows the comparable in surrounding cities to give an idea of how our proposed levy compares. We'll be one of the few cities in the metro proposing a 5% or less levy increase. Statewide, that average is 8.8%. There are a couple of cities lower than us, if you look at, at the table to the left, but those were, you'll see a chart in the future that shows they were the two highest as far as the cost of city services already. And I do get a chance to talk to many of my peers, finance directors from other cities, and, and a lot, their, their budget drivers are a lot, lot of the same as us, and pretty consistent with new city buildings, street improvements, fire trucks, and police and fire staffing being kind of the bigger drivers. The city levy being proposed tonight is 26,744,000, which is an increase of 1,271,000 or 4.99% over last year. The EDA levy of 500,000, which is no change from the previous year. This is made up of 900,000 or a 4% increase in general fund operations, and then a 500,000 dollar capital improvement levy increase. This would be slightly offset by a decrease in the debt service levy. Council approved the use of reserves towards the debt service levy rather than levy for Here's the summary of the 2025 proposed general fund budget. The budget incorporates the general fund portion, the tax levy, along with many other budget impact items that I'll cover over the next few slides. Included in the council packet, again, as well as the website, the full budget book has, has been provided. Our largest portion continues to be public safety, which includes police, fire, and building inspection, police union contracts, and fire staffing changes being kind of the biggest drivers of those for, for 2025. Here's a summary of changes impacting the 2025 proposed levy, so this is comparing what was levied last year to what is being levied this year, which I'll again touch on in more detail in a, in a few slides. But the amount shown in the red parentheses represent a decrease in the property tax levy. So as an example, increase in fee revenues would result in less property tax revenue needed to fund those services. So in this case, red means good. Through additional revenues and transfers, we're able to offset about 1.9 million of the increases in expenses. So in this case, red means good. Through additional revenues and transfers, we're able to offset about 1.9 million of the increases in expenses. So kind of beginning with revenues here, overall impact on the levy from non-property tax revenue sources is 1,663,000. This includes the payment in lieu of taxes contribution from the Shakopee Public Utilities. We have an agreement with them that they pay a portion of their, their revenues. We estimate that they increase by 330,000 for 2025. The city has a joint powers agreement with Scott County to provide prosecution services. As part of that agreement, we pass through our, our court fine revenue to the county to offset those prosecution costs. In the past, we did not show that as a separate revenue, but per state auditor recommendation, we're now showing the revenue on one side and the expenditure on one side. So no net impact, but you'll see the revenue and you'll also see the, see the expense. The city's building permits have been strong over the past few years as a result of commercial and residential development. Development and, and building permits are expected to continue, but at a more moderate level than what we've seen over the past few years. The city's 2025 forecast for building revenue is a little less conservative than we had the past couple of years. We've actually increased that by 303,000. For, so we have a total budget of building permit revenue in 2025 of 3.4 million. Sand Venture will be open for the full year in 2025. As a result of proposed fee schedule increases, along with anticipated increased demand for the enhanced amenities out there, we've increased the forecasted revenues by 181,000. And then several organizations contract with the Shakopee Police Department to provide services throughout the year. With the addition of the amphitheater, we've increased that by 175,000. That's usually offset with overtime expense to fulfill, to fulfill those agreements. So you'll also see a corresponding expense line for that as well.
How does that work, offset by overtime? What does that mean?
So the officers will have an opportunity to sign up for those additional shifts, which would be, they'd be getting paid overtime, but then that would be covered through this contracted services revenue.
The contracted price that's received for the services provided covers the overtime?
Correct, and you'll, it'll actually be, so the fee schedule will be coming through you next, to the next council meeting. You'll see an increase in that based on the new union contracts, but that is, that does cover that cost.
Okay.
What we're talking about is contracted to like Canterbury or to Valley Fair or something like that, right, for the public?
Correct.
Or any event where it's required, like the River Valley Days that we did, we had two for three hours, I think we paid for. Okay, continue.
Yep.
Let me, let me, as we go through slides, if there's any questions, let's ask them as we go instead of trying to remember everything for the very end, okay?
I got one on the next one.
Okay, continue, thank you.
And then lastly, just based on our investment holding and current investment rates, we have projected an increase in investment income too of 150,000 for next year. Moving on to expenses, so, oh, no, I'm sorry, one more slide here. So we have budgeted for a net increase in transfers of 264,000. So these are transfers to the general fund from other funds to help pay for operating costs that otherwise, again, would be levy funded. In 2023, we received one-time public safety aid of 1.99 million, which one of the, one of the items we used the money for was to add two additional officers and to pay for two of those officers in 2024, and then half the cost in, in 2025. So there's a net reduction, that budgeted transfer of 85,000. Staff is also recommending to utilize 350,000 of fund balance from the city's self-insurance fund to offset costs associated with the increase in health insurance premiums. Funding was of 600,000 was initially set aside in 2017 as we exploit our own self, self-insurance options. Now moving on to expenditures, so starting with personnel, like most other governments are, and cities are, are operating, operating costs are being primarily driven by personnel, which represents about three quarters of our, of the increase in expenditures for 2025. Wages and benefits account for about 70% of our general fund's operating costs. The city has three, three unions, patrol, sergeants, public works, and I guess captains now. All three union contracts were revised in 2024 and cover a three-year period from 2024 to 26. The preliminary 2025 budget has been built with the assumption that union and non-union wages will see an equivalent 3% cost of living adjustment across all employee groups and union and non-union. This amounts to about 600,000. Impacts and market adjustments to union contracts that were included in, that were not included in the 2024 budget, but approved in 2024, net to about 198,000. The 2024 budget for the fire department included a deputy chief, assistant fire chief, fire captain, and, and three battalion chiefs, so a total of six positions, which we reorganized this year into two deputy chiefs, three fire captains, an office assistant, and two firefighters, so eight positions. Additionally, the paid-on-call firefighters, the Fire Relief Association, were converted into part-time firefighters. And then net cost of those staffing changes, including part-time and overtime, is about 509,000. The increase will be partially offset by the city retaining the state aid payment reflected on the operational changes of 345,000, which previously would be passed on to the Fire Relief Association. The 25 budget also includes a health insurance increase of 16.7%, which calculates to about 375,000. As we have seen, our utilization increased quite a bit over the past 24 months, which has led to an increase in premiums. Again, we plan on utilizing 350,000 of fund balance to help offset those costs, and we're continuing to explore a, a pool with Scott County and Scott County cities to see if it makes sense to do an insurance pool with those parties as well. The city was a recipient of a state grant for the cost of a new building official in 2024. That grant will end in 2024, but the city is applying for additional grant funding to cover the portion of the second year of that position. That position is now included in 2025 budget for 114,000. The city is proposing one new position for next year, and that would be a fire inspector position that would start in July of 2025. This was identified in the Citygate study for both succession planning as well as additional prevention inspection purposes. That cost for half the year is 63,000. And then 2025 is a non-election year, so we've removed election judges from, from the budget. And then, and the engineering division has transitioned from in-house development inspection services to contracting with an outside engineering firm to do those inspections and reduce their staff count by one position.
All right, let's hold up here. Counselor Whiting?
Non-election year, so in the event that we are court ordered to run another election, we pay for that, correct?
Yeah, and you, we would have to do a budget amendment for that, so it's not included in this budget.
Okay, we'll wait for that, yeah.
And we don't know what it would look like if it would be a full or a precinct or what, if that even happens, so.
No, we would have to wait and see what was ordered, and then we would do analysis of exactly what it would cost, and we'd bring that to you and ask for a budget amendment at that time.
Mr. Lara?
Other 182,200, would you be able to provide us a breakdown?
Other net adjustments?
Yeah, so typically, if it's not anything that's significant enough, it, it kind of gets pushed together with a bunch of other little items. I certainly will provide that to you.
Thank you.
So one of those things would be step increases would be part of that. Then you would have, you know, potentially hiring people at different rates that which will either offset or increase it depending on who the positions were before. Yeah. I, I would, I'm willing to go out on a limb and say it's mostly step increases. That would be part of that, though.
If you could share that with staff to put out to all the council, that'd be appreciated.
Yep.
Other questions? The full-time fire inspector, we currently have one, correct?
We do.
So we're gonna have two?
Yep, this would be adding, the role would be a little bit different, but it would be, and I hate to comment on somebody else's proposal, but it would be adding another position, and again, it would help with succession planning for that position, and they'd be able to do a lot more proactive inspections.
Any other questions? Okay, carry on, thank you. $2 million in one year of, of wages and benefits is a lot for one year.
Yeah, the reality is, most of that is police and fire. I mean, that's, you know, with the restructuring of the fire department, and then obviously bringing our police officers to the midpoint of all of our comparable cities, that's, that's where you're, that's where that funding.
Health insurance is in there.
And health insurance is a big one, too.
Yeah, and, and like I mentioned on the previous slide, I just kind of went back to this to show this. So 70% of our budget, our operating budget is personnel, so, you know, 2 million on whatever 70% of 40 million is, is, you know, percentage-wise, it's not necessarily as much as it looks when you look at it as a, from a dollar perspective.
There you go.
The next slide here, so, let me check, I got my right one here. Moving on to operational changes, so these are expected to be continued into future years too, so ongoing changes, I guess. So the county prosecution costs, which I mentioned before, which is now, which is now, we're showing the revenue and the expenditure side. That's 325,000 plus an increase of 17,500 for this year. Inflationary cost of utilities, which include electric, gas, water, et cetera, which were based on actual costs over the past two, two years. Software costs have been adjusted to reflect those cost increases as well as any software that has been added in 2024 and 25. And then, as a result of the dissolution of the fire relief, we're now able to retain the fire state aid payment of 345,000, so that would be savings. The city utilizes internal service funds for the purchase and replacement of city equipment and facilities. The funding source is annual rent, which is basically internal charges to the appropriate departments to help fund the replacement of that equipment. The equipment rent increases both as a result of new equipment being added to the schedule, as well as increases year-over-year in the cost of vehicles and equipment. We do have a 20-year equipment replacement schedule that's included in our five-year capital improvement plan. That identifies all, all of our equipment, their useful life, replacement years, and costs for anybody who's interested in, in looking at that. The annual costs for the various internal service funds are calculated based on estimated useful life and scheduled replacement dates. But we further adjusted the 2025 amounts based on balances and, and other items. An example being in 2024, we sold some fire vehicles, and the proceeds went into the equipment fund, which has taken, which we took into account with the budget request for 2025.
And then we adjusted the, the rents?
Yes. Then one-time adjustments, so general fund, typically we moderate our ups and downs through our, our internal service charge, internal service funds and our rent charges. However, there's a couple of one-time adjustments that were included in this budget or in last year's budget that won't be reoccurring in future budgets. We have three new vehicle purchases being proposed for 2025, which would be a police side-by-side, which would be used at large entertainment events such as concerts at the amphitheater. The side-by-side would be purchased using travel funds. New vehicles are also proposed for the building inspector and proposed for the new fire inspector position. Those are being offset in the budget by increase in forecasted building permit revenues. And then in 2024, we had included the implementation cost of a ERP system, which hasn't occurred as planned in 2024, but we've set aside the funds and the technology fund for, for future replacement, but that is, again, a reduction from 2024. And then fund balance, in 2024, we utilized 200,000 to offset operating costs within Sand Venture. We've eliminated that in the 2025 budget and aren't proposing to use any general fund reserves, meaning this will be a balanced budget for 2025. During the capital improvement plan, we had a work session on August 7th, and then we brought that back on November 6th for city council approval. We reviewed the projects program for 2025. The CIP identified 42.8 million projects for 2025, which will be included in, in our budget. Cost of maintaining existing streets have significantly increased over the past decade. The annual cost of overlays and reconstruction projects in the 2024 to 20, 2020 to the 2024 CIP, we threw, were 3.7 million. That cost is, is doubled in the new, the newest CIP, the 25 to 29, to about 7.5 million. Funding sources, which include capital improvement, the capital improvement levy, special assessments, MSA, state aid, and franchise fees have been, remained relatively flat as, as those costs have gone up. So we are proposing a $500,000 increase to help close that funding gap. In the past, the city has utilized one-time transfers from the general fund and, as well as bond proceeds to support those projects, which we anticipate continuing to do as needed in the future as well. And then I just added the note from the community survey there. In the 2023 survey, two-thirds of the community supported, and said they would be willing to pay more for well-kept and maintain city roads. So we have, the city has only two bonds that are being repaid from property tax levies. The most recent one, the 2022 A Improvement Bond, in the previous budget, council set aside 226,000 to basically avoid having to levy that amount to pay for the repayment of that, that bond. Earlier this year, council approved the use of an additional 347,000, which effectively eliminates the need to levy for the 2022 bonds. As a result, we're seeing a levy, the impact of that is a decrease in the levy of 121,500. Moving on to market value information, which is the other piece of the equation when it comes to how much people are paying or they, the tax impact on property owners. These amounts are from the Scott County Assessor's Office. The city's taxable market value is 8.4 billion, which is an increase of 658 million or 8.5% from last year. Apartment, commercial, and industrial market value grew at the fastest rates. New, new construction accounted for about 250 million of the increase in taxable market value. One slide here, just to touch on residential values. The average home change from last year, value change from last year, was 3.6% for existing homes. As you can see from this chart, on the right there, 70% of homes had value changes between 0 and 5%. So generally speaking, we're not seeing, you know, a significant large swing up or down for residential values. For taxes payable in 2025, the homestead market value exclusion will increase from 417,000 to 517,000. The exclusion is based on a sliding scale that phases out at 517,000. And so basically, it reduces the taxable market value of those homes, and then ultimately, it shifts the property tax burden away from those homes onto other properties within the city. I have updated the slide through 2025. The tax capacity of the city is adjusted for the fiscal disparities program, which is unique to the seven-county metro area in Minnesota. 40% of our commercial and industrial growth since 1971 gets contributed into a pool. In turn, we receive a distribution based on our population and market value of all property per person compared to the average market value per person in that seven-county metro area. We are one of the largest net contributors to the program. 2024 data showed that we're nine out of 179 communities. This chart shows Shakopee's fiscal disparities contribution in terms of tax capacity. We've gone from 2.4 million back in 2015 to 9.5 million in 2025. And then to put it in, to context, as a percent of total tax capacity, it's about 8, 8.6% of our tax capacity that we're contributing to the fiscal disparities program.
And what do we get back from that?
Nothing.
How much? A big fat zero?
They, we take care of a lot of our neighbors, so.
Now, I will say Nate said that this was in the state of Minnesota. This actually only exists in the metro area in the whole United States. This does not exist anywhere else. Where we take your money and we give it to somebody else, and you're not allowed to use that, that's tax dollars that, that could go to our roads.
You forgot the most important piece. We take your money and we, against our will, give it to somebody else.
It's a terrible program.
Against your will, and they take our money against our will.
Right.
And it's given to communities with no neat basis. Not to mention any names, but including some of our neighbors.
Yeah, and, and it's been a formula that hasn't been updated forever, so it, but to change a formula to maybe more accurately reflect some unique circumstances based in, that we know about, probably won't ever happen.
I, I've been a part of two legislative committees to look at this and figure out. I, I've been a part of two legislative committees to look at this and figure out how we could update it. And we still have not been able to crack the code on it.
How about abolish it and start over?
You gotta have a plan.
I, I would be all in favor of that. The problem is, is there are more people, communities that get than give.
Than give, right.
And so then it's just a matter of base politics.
Well, they can still get, they just get it from a different source. If the state likes it so much, the state can fund it. Carry on.
Yeah, so one more, one more comment on this because it is pretty significant, just how much it's increased over the past year, two point eight million or forty-two percent just from last year. So we've seen a pretty big uptick as we've had some industrial and commercial properties come onto our tax roll. This, the city levies a flat dollar for taxes, which is spread against all taxable properties within the city based on their percentage of total tax capacity. Residential represents forty-five percent of the city's tax capacity. In comparison to this chart last year, it's about one point six percent less in, in tax capacity. So again, this chart is in percentages, but if you want to think of it in dollar terms, it works out approximately the same way. So for every dollar the city requests in her levy for twenty twenty-five, it's about forty-five cents of every dollar being paid by residential. One chart on historical tax rates over the past ten years. So based on current data, the proposed tax levy will have a slight increase on the tax rate from twenty-seven point four to twenty-seven point seven-three, but overall, you can see past ten years, we've seen a declining tax rate. Number will change slightly when the county gives their final numbers, but number should be pretty close. Lastly, I want to touch on the impact on the median value home. The value of the median value home in the past year increased three hundred, by, from three hundred and thirty-eight thousand four hundred to three hundred and fifty thousand seven hundred, which is a twelve thousand dollar, three hundred increase or three point six percent. For the median value home, this equates to a twenty twenty dol, twenty, twenty-two dollars, sorry, I'm bad with twos today, a twenty-two dollar increase or a two point five percent increase in property taxes, absent any change in value. So if you took that same home valued at three hundred and fifty thousand last year and it was still valued at three hundred and fifty thousand this year, they'd actually see a tax decrease of about fifteen bucks. So the tax impact on every home in Shakopee will be a little different based on their value change, but this provides a comparison of the tax change. I could use that theme music now.
There's, there's an incentive for you, right?
Yeah, so, so depending on what your home, the home value changes, that is going to impact everybody a little bit differently, but wanted to provide a little bit of a comparison to provide home values in different ranges. So if you're in the twenty-fifth percent quartile and your home increased, the same amount, the average home increased, I'd see, see about a twelve dollar tax increase. If your home was valued in the seventy-fifth percentile or about four hundred and thirty-three thousand, you'd see about a thirty-seven dollar increase. Here's that cost of services that I mentioned earlier. So this is a three hundred thousand dollar home utilizing five thousand gallons of water, and it shows what that home would pay in property taxes and then city sewer and, and storm utilities. So those are the utilities that the city is responsible for. This is based on twenty twenty-four. Obviously, I don't know what twenty twenty-five rates will be yet for these different cities. But the annual cost for Shakopee is lower than our peer comparison cities at a thousand ninety-six. The other cities range from a thousand two ninety to two thousand forty.
And this is the slide that shows where Ender Grove Heights and Golden Valley, who actually are taxing less than us and percentage-wise this year, are showing, showing their true colors and how much they actually tax and why they don't need to tax as much this year.
Yeah, that's why it's.
They showed an increase.
Well, they, they, they were down with us. They're below us in how much they're increasing their tax on a percentage-wise, but the reason why is because they already taxed the most of the comparables.
Yeah, so then I was just gonna mention that cost for Shakopee actually went down from twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four as our tax rate went down, and then our utility changes were pretty minimal. The only other city listed here that had their tax rate do, decreased for twenty twenty-four was Coon Rapids. I don't have much to say on the schedule, but I put in, in here for reference. The only thing I was going to mention is what people received from the county in November for their preliminary estimate statements is, is basically what we're presenting tonight. And then my final slide here is just a reminder, this is a public meeting, the public is welcome to speak on the budget and or tax levy. After tonight's meeting, the budget will come back to city council on December seventeenth for final approval. So no action is required tonight, except to allow people to speak and comment on the budget.
All right, questions? The, we transferred what, two point two or two point one million unspent dollars into the capital improvement fund on top of the levied seven hundred thousand in twenty-four for a total of about three million. So now we put three million dollars in in twenty twenty-four and now we're raising the CIP, the capital improvement fund levy by five hundred thousand, even though we put an extra two million into it.
Road bubble.
Well, it's just, it's in the inflationary pressures on, on what it's costing to build roads. I mean, it's, yes, we are, and we will put more in in the future because costs are increasing.
So how do we see in this budget that same unspent millions that'll eventually go back into the capital improvement fund? I mean, you're showing us a budget, but you're not showing us that unspent portion that goes into the capital improvement fund.
Well, I answered, answered this a couple of different ways, and if you want me to answer it differently, I, I can, but, so obviously we don't know how the twenty twenty-five budget will, will end up, right? We're not going, we don't know how we're going to end up at the end of the year for twenty twenty-five quite yet. And I know we've, we've became a little less conservative with some of our revenue forecasts, so where you're seeing some of these, you know, some of these surpluses, we, it might not be something you see, see every year. So we've been, we've been lucky enough to have surpluses, and I think we've used them the right way with one-time expenses such as putting it towards CIP and, and other things that were, were one-time in nature. But, you know, the, the gap continues to grow for some of these street projects. You know, I had that slide in there that showed just how much it's gone up over the past five years, and even if we have seven million dollars worth of projects, a five to ten percent increase, you're talking, you know, fifty, a hundred thousand each year, those costs are going to go up. So the idea, I, the idea is just to kind of close that gap and make it a little bit more manageable, so if we do have surpluses, we can continue to do it that way and not have to raise it even further a couple of years down the road.
Mr. Whiting?
You, you know, we, when the, the one sixty-nine bridge came and built out Shakopee and all those roads were built thirty, forty years ago, and now it's time to fix them and maintain them. I think in the, in the future, you know, we know that this road and, and construction bubble is going to hit us at this time, and we plan for it, at least that. But the things we're doing with the lining of the sewers and some of the pavement chemicals that are new and we're, we're trying them, I think, in the future, we'll have a lot less, I'm hoping, pavement reconstruction and, and costs in our, in our CIP, because we're planning ahead and doing things right now. And along with that, you know, we've, we've added our staff, we've paid our staff a, a good wage and a good increase, and we've added staff. We got to take care of our roads, too.
Any other questions? Okay, this is a public hearing. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak on this matter, now would be the time. Don't hesitate to step up to the microphone and be glad to have your comments. Anybody? Second, second call?
I thought someone was gonna get up.
Second call, if there's somebody that would like to address the council on this matter, proposed budget for twenty twenty-five, it is a public hearing, now would be the time to come forward. We'd love to hear your comments. And I'm seeing none. Mr. Whiting?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
Motion second, discussion on the motion. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, public hearing is closed. This was an informational item, so there is no action to take. Thank you, Mr. Reinhardt, for your presentation. And that will take us to item number nine, recess for economic development authority meeting.
Make a motion to recess to our economic development authority meeting.
Second, Mr. Delaney, any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
I call to order the Shakopee Economic Development Authority meeting for tonight, December third. Staff, if you could please take note of the roll. We will jump, we don't have a approval for an agenda, and our report is the EDA bill list for our viewing. Any questions on that?
No questions.
Number four.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda and the reports and a motion to adjourn.
And I'd like to speak to it.
We have a motion in a second, and go ahead.
Well, I, I want to delay, otherwise it'd be a new world record for the shortest meeting.
We may hold that right now.
You already hold the record, so it's nothing on you, right?
What's next? Sorry, well, we don't have anything else.
Motion in a second.
A motion in a second, so everybody in favor, say aye. Aye opposed, motion passes. Number four. What is, a turn?
We just did that.
Oh, we did, we're done, there you go.
All right, very good.
It wasn't one.
One minute.
One minute.
I'm gonna give you the record on that one.
Oh, I, I think Council Contreras has it. Item eleven A, County Road Seventeen Reconstruction Project Presentation. Mr. Jordan?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here before you this evening to give you a status update and an overview of the Scott County, County Highway Seventeen Reconstruction Project. Before we get started, I'll give you a little bit of history. I'm gonna call it County Highway Seventeen, but it's also known as Marshall Road, so for context for everyone listening. Back in two thousand nine, Scott County partnered with the city of Shakopee, city of Prior Lake and Mindott to conduct a corridor study along County Highway Seventeen. It was identified that the county needed a future north-south principal arterial roadway. Essentially, what a principal arterial is, it's the highest functioning classification roadway that you can have, the, I think, US Highway one sixty-nine, then County Highway forty-two through Burnsville and through portions of Savage as well. So the county wanted to preserve a location to have a future north-south roadway as this area of Scott County grew. The goals at the time of completing the study was that they wanted to develop a long-term vision for County Highway Seventeen south of County Highway forty-two, and then preserve that principal arterial corridor. The image on the right is an excerpt from that study back in two thousand nine. The area that we're going to be focusing on today is more shown in blue, that's segment Summary of the corridor study findings was County Highway Seventeen and Trunk Highway Thirteen are located in future growth areas. This was based on the Scott County twenty thirty comprehensive plan, based on land use guidelines that they identified that this area of Scott County was going to grow in the future. They didn't know how fast it would grow, but they can make assumptions and projections at that time. Also, based on how the roadways are constructed at this time, based on the population forecast that those roadways would be unacceptable for traffic operations, they're not built to handle the increase in traffic if development does happen as programmed. So at the time, with the study back in two thousand nine, the design solutions for County Highway Seventeen included constructing the roadway as a four-lane divided expressway with a sixty mile an hour design speed, preserving a two-hundred-foot right-of-way corridor, constructing trails along both sides of the roadway, having wider shoulders that could be utilized for transit and bus lanes, and then intersections improvements at County Highway forty-two, more than likely an interchange. And then providing access control at the local roadways. That would be constructing medians along County Highway Seventeen, limiting the number of accesses along the road.
Mr. Jordan, do you know if the county incorporated any possible purchases by the SMSC into land in the area when they made that study in two thousand and nine?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Reynolds. That was not part of the assumptions at the time. Back during the comprehensive planning, the county used their best guesses, along with the cities, to determine based on existing land uses and future land uses, how those properties could develop. They weren't forecasting that those properties could be purchased and then remain undeveloped at the time. So moving forward, beyond two thousand nine, the county and the city partnered on several project improvements along County Highway Seventeen. We'll start in twenty, twenty-twelve, the county reconstructed the intersection of County Highway Seventeen and County Highway forty-two to an interchange. Moving north, in twenty thirteen, they reconstructed County Highway Seventeen between County Highway Seventy-Eight and Seventeenth Avenue as a four-lane divided roadway. Twenty fifteen, they worked between forty-two and seventy-eight and constructed that road as a four-lane divided roadway. And then in twenty twenty, they reconstructed County Road forty-two to the east of Seventeen, between County Highway Seventeen and County Highway eighty-three. Essentially, they took that plan from two thousand nine and prioritized investments along the areas basically north of forty-two.
And in speaking to County Road forty-two, this council was essentially unconvinced about investing in that property when that came before us in twenty twenty. And both Mr. Kurski and I talked about the development that was going to occur north of forty-two, and that swayed this body to support that effort. Subsequently, after the construction of forty-two, the SMSC purchased all the land north of forty-two, and none of that is available for development at this point, and I think if the council would have known about that at that time, the investment that we put in, two point one million, I think we put in from the city into County Road forty-two essentially was for naught.
Mr. Jordan, did you say they upgraded Marshall Road to a four-lane divided in these areas? Because I'm thinking if I drive Marshall Road right now and I head south, it's not divided at where the most of the traffic is, just south of one sixty-nine, that's, it's not divided. Up the hill, it's not divided to forty-two, it's.
Is forty-two divided?
Forty-two is divided, but the rest of Marshall Road is not divided. The only, the only exception is, well, I don't think there is an exception.
In this picture, there's some.
I, I don't think Marshall Road is divided anywhere that I, that I can think of.
I'll, I'll prepare an exhibit later on to show you what the four-lane facility looks like north of forty-two. But, Mr. Mayor, thanks for your questions, I'll, I'll have a map that shows what those improvements look like at that time.
Well, I'm talking about these twelve improvement, thirteen improvement, fifteen improvement. I thought you said they, during them improvements, they improved them to a four-lane divided. And that's not, that's just not accurate.
If I misspoke, I'm, I'm gonna clarify, I'm, I, I will show you what, I'll, I'll bring up the designs and look at those, Mr. Mayor.
I mean, we, we all drive that road, is it, is Marshall Road divided?
Nomenclature, maybe terminology, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't.
I'll, I'll pull up an exhibit, I don't have one right now in this, in this graphic, but I'll show you what it looks like here. And maybe it's nomenclature and, and discussions of what that means. Thank you. So I apologize for the formatting of this text, but the county reconvened a work, a work group in twenty twenty-two to refocus their efforts on the County Highway Seventeen corridor. That was a partnership effort that the county decided to move forward based on some of the changing land uses and knowing that, basically in the two thousand nine study, that as we're approaching twenty thirty at the time, they were assuming that improvements would be needed to County Highway Seventeen south of forty-two. So the county took the initiative to bring the group together to reconvene the study and determine what the updated long-term plans should be for County Highway Seventeen. That study really focused on the corridor between Trunk Highway Thirteen and County Road forty-two, so essentially south of the improvements that they made previously. The goal of that study is develop, to develop a safe corridor to accommodate existing and future users. They know that growth hadn't happened as quickly as what they assumed in the twenty thirty land use plan. When they went back and looked at the traffic forecasting and the numbers that they're seeing today, essentially volumes were lower than what the two thousand nine study estimated. Really, what they forecasted is that that four-lane facility wasn't needed until about twenty forty-five, where the previous study showed that it was needed in twenty thirty. However, as they were reviewing the traffic operations and traffic counts, the crash rates and segment severity rates were both at exceeding the critical rate or at the expected crash rate, meaning that there was a crash or a safety problem along County Highway Seventeen. So although the four-lane facility wasn't needed at this time right now, there's an accident issue that's happening. accident issue that's happening along the corridor, and improvements should be prioritized in order to address those crash issues. Also, they wanted to evaluate whether access control should be implemented compared to what a principal arterial should look like. So, essentially a principal arterial, that highest functioning classification, should they implement that now at this time, given that the traffic volumes aren't growing as quickly as what they assumed. And they also wanted to look at, well, we have such a long project corridor between Trunk Highway 13 and County Highway 42, should we break this project up into manageable segments? And where do those traffic volumes change as you go along that corridor?
Mr. Jordan, so, a four-lane roadway is not needed currently, correct?
That's correct.
But we do have safety issues.
That's correct.
Can you address safety issues without doing a four-lane roadway?
Mr. Reynolds, you definitely can. Right now, County Highway 17 is a two-lane undivided roadway, meaning the north-south traffic that drives against each other has no barrier between themselves. So, if you have an accident where a vehicle runs off the road or leaves their lane, you could have a potential for a head-on collision or things like that. So, widening the roadway and creating a median between the roadways could address some of those safety issues, address some of the runoff road crashes. Also, the crash rates at intersections exceeded the critical crash rate because there's no intersection control. Right now, we have side street stop conditions, so vehicles entering onto County Highway 17 could have accidents where they're counting high-speed roadways. Potentially, if you do intersection improvements, we could decrease what that crash rate is and improve some of the safety. So, based on that, the county prioritized wanting to do these improvements ahead of actually constructing what the principal arterial roadway would look like. So, the study recommendations, where we're at today, the county's been working from 2022 to today, they've identified that they wanted to focus the first project, which will cause Phase 1 for construction in 2027, which would be between County Highway 42 south to County Highway 82. County Highway 82 is the road if you go east of Shakopee, would take you right along Mystic Lake Casino and Dakota Ice Arena if you head east into Prior Lake, and County Highway 42 is where the interchange currently exists. So, that's the area that the county wanted to prioritize as Phase 1 of construction. Based on the recommendations following that traffic analysis, they would recommend constructing a two-lane divided limited-access roadway, essentially one lane in each direction, but having that divided median separating the lanes of traffic. They would propose constructing trails along both sides of the roadway, including grade separation, and I'll show you what that looks like in a little bit here, to promote mobility. They're working on a project right now to the west within Shakopee, the Marion Junction Trail, which essentially builds a pedestrian facility across the Minnesota River, which would continue to extend along County Highway 14. That trail would then connect to County Highway 17 and provide pedestrian connections further to the north into Shakopee. They are proposing constructing roundabout improvements at County Highway 82 and County Highway 14 intersections. That's a little bit different because in a principal arterial, they'd be looking at grade separation for, at intersections, so essentially interchanges rather than roundabouts. So, they scaled back on the approach for what they'd be proposing as an interim improvement. And then they'd still be recommending access control, and I'll show you what that looks like at local roadways, which would include Marcia Lane, Norton Drive, Eaglewood Lane, and private driveways onto the roadway. This was in your packet, this is a draft project layout. This is really hard to see on the screen, but I will zoom in onto the three areas and red on the screen here to show you really what the details look like of the proposed improvements. This is the county's first draft of the layout, essentially taking their analysis that they've done over the last two years and putting it into a recommended design. So, we'll start on the south at the County Highway 82 intersection. Again, north is to the right, east is to the bottom of the screen, that would take you essentially by the Dakota Ice Arena. Essentially, what they're proposing here is a interesting roundabout. It's a multi-lane roundabout with a bypass lane for southbound traffic, meaning that if you're traveling south on County Highway 17, you don't necessarily need to go through the roundabout to continue going south. You could bypass the roundabout, have your own slip lane that'll continue at a higher speed, not needing to go through this intersection. And then they're also proposing two westbound lanes to circulate the intersection. Essentially, they're looking at traffic coming from Mystic Lake Casino and Prior Lake. There's a higher volume of people coming from the east and wanting to go north into Shakopee to access Highway 169, and then increasing capacity from the south for northbound traffic, providing two lanes, one eastbound lane and one northbound lane. This design really is based on the current traffic forecasting for something that can last 20 years based on how it's constructed. And we'll move to the north here, this is the County Highway 14 intersection, very similar design except that bypass lane is northbound now. So, you'd have additional traffic basically coming from the east in Prior Lake at County Highway 82, heading north along County Highway 17 to 169. You wouldn't need to go through this roundabout intersection to continue north to increase that mobility. The rectangles in orange are pedestrian underpasses. The county is proposing these because this trail section would connect to that Marion Junction Trail that they're focusing on, which would extend further to the west along County Highway 14. They're proposing these underpasses because then pedestrian traffic can navigate through the roundabout intersections without needing to go at an at-grade crossing. Reconstructing these roadways provides the opportunity to change grades and make dropping in those culverts easier to get under the roadway. This would be very similar to what we saw out at County Highway 17, or 78, at Zumbro Avenue by the Highview Park Development, where you'd have an underpass under the county highway, which would connect the trails on both sides. Next is the access changes for the local streets. These are the three local roadways that connect to County Highway 17, which in the first-phase project area, I'll start on the left, which is Eaglewood Lane. This is the roadway that's the furthest south of the project corridor. Essentially, it's just north of County Highway 82, this is Eaglewood Lane. The county's proposing to restrict that to a right-in, right-out, meaning that you can only access Eaglewood Lane if you're coming from the north with a right turn, and the only movement you can make leaving Eaglewood Lane is making a right turn to the south. It's important to note that Eaglewood Lane does not connect to any other roadways currently at this time. All of these properties are essentially only accessible at County Highway 17 at Eaglewood Lane.
Mr. Jordan, those residents will have to go through, around a roundabout to go in the other direction then, and they're not gonna like that.
That's correct, and I'll get into some of the details as well with what these access changes mean for all of these residents and local roadway connections. The county does have plans in the future to allow local accesses to continue to be constructed within Scott County, meaning that essentially at some time, properties to the west may develop and those local roadways may connect up to County Highway 14 or other roadways where you'd have alternative routes, but that wouldn't be the case today upon opening the roadway. The next intersection would be Norton Drive, this roadway is on the east, it's the one in the center of your screen. There's a cul-de-sac roadway, so again, it does not connect to any other roadway connections. The county's proposing to restrict that to a right-in, right-out. The one caveat to that is they are proposing at Marcia Lane to construct somewhat of a U-turn movement where they'd create almost a cul-de-sac. So, if you would leave Norton Drive and head north, you'll be able to make a left turn at Marcia Lane to make a U-turn to head back to the south if you're leaving your neighborhood.
Mr. Jordan, night to unite, I met Marcia. It's Marcia Lane.
Oh, sorry, thank you, Marcia Lane. I very much appreciate that. So, again, Norton Drive is located to the east, or to the north, I'm sorry, right in this location. It's a cul-de-sac roadway, meaning there's no other access points, so that would be restricted to right-in, right-out. Now, as we go north to Marcia Lane, the county is proposing to allow left-turn movements in and right-turn movements into Marcia Lane, but only right-turn movements out. Now, that's pretty critical because Marcia Lane has no other access locations to the north outside of an inbound movement at County Highway 17, which is a little funky if you imagine where you're at, at the interchange at 42. You can make a right turn if you're heading south on County Highway 17 into Marcia Lane, but this entire neighborhood needs to make, the only access is County Highway 17 at this location, where they can make currently today, left and right movements out of their neighborhood. The county is proposing to restrict that to a right-out movement only. And when we talk about these access restrictions, the county's basing this on the future designation of County Highway 17, which is a principal arterial roadway. In the county's transportation plan, they have access spacing requirements for different access types. For a principal arterial roadway, their access spacing is, full access would be designated at one-mile increments. So, this would be at County Highway 42, at County Highway 14, and County Highway 82 are roughly mile, one mile apart, that meets the full access spacing requirements. And then limited accesses need to be spaced a half-mile apart. So, that would be what the access control is based on, is they wouldn't, based on the future policies of a principal arterial, those local roadways do not meet that full access spacing requirements. Now, that's pretty critical because we're a little bit in limbo between, is this a principal arterial, or is this meeting the current designation of the roadway with certain upgrades? Currently, County Highway 17 is designated as a minor arterial roadway, so a little bit lower classification. Those standards are, for a full-access roadway, they're quarter-mile, and for limited access, it's eighth-mile. So, it's much less restricted than a principal arterial roadway, and based on the current spacing of those local roadways, would, they would meet the quarter-mile full-access spacing requirements. So, just to put that into context, with the future classification, they do not meet the full access. The current classification today, they do meet the quarter-mile access spacing.
What's the effect of the residents that actually live in those neighborhoods, Mr. Jordan?
That's what this slide will show you. So, we'll start on the north at Marcia Lane. So, if you wanted to go north out of Marcia Lane to go into downtown Shakopee, let's say, along 17, you would essentially need to go 1.1 miles out of the way to go south and make a U-turn at the roundabout at County Highway 82 to go back north.
So, there's no way, if I live in that neighborhood, that I'm gonna be able to go north where frankly, the majority of someone leaving that area is going to go, whether it be Shakopee or the Twin Cities area, unless they're going and working on a farm in the rural area of southern Scott County.
Or the casino.
Every one of those, or to the casino, every one of those residents on every trip are gonna have to drive 1.1 miles, go to a roundabout in order to go north.
That's correct, and that's based on the county's current draft layout and preliminary design, which I'm presenting to you today.
How many residents do we know are in that community?
I believe there's just under 40 residents within that area. The next will go south, Norton Drive. Now, because it's on the different side of the roadway, those residents are able to make a right turn and go north. The challenge with Norton Drive is if you're coming from the north, if you're coming from 169 or coming from County Highway 42, to be able to get into Norton Drive, you would need to go .7 miles out of your way to the south on County Highway 14 and make a U-turn at the roundabout to get back to your property. So, it's a little bit different because this is getting to your house as opposed to leaving your house, but again, these are neighborhoods that are landlocked, there's no other alternate roadway connections, so the right-in, right-outs restrict how they move and leave their properties. And the last is, I don't have an exhibit for this, but this is Eaglewood Lane, this is the southernmost one. This property is on the west side of County Highway 17, they're closest to County Highway 82. For anyone leaving Eaglewood Lane and wanting to go north, they would need to go a half-mile out of their way south to the County Highway 82 intersection and make the U-turn to go back north on County Highway 17.
So, we have all these neighborhoods that are affected by this potential county project. Do we know how many residences we are looking at with these three?
All of them.
It's around 75 total residents, I would say, within the city of Shakopee. I can get that number for you, Mr. Reynolds.
Mr. Delaney?
Yep, just a quick question, has there been a public comment period for this development?
Thank you, Mr. Delaney, I will get into that. The county is planning to host a public open house in January for this project. I wanted to make sure I could bring this before the city council, before that public meeting, so you're prepared for when residents pose questions to you, especially our Shakopee residents that are directly impacted by these access changes. To my knowledge, residents aren't aware of these changes at this point right now, because none of this has been made public outside of potentially this meeting tonight. I do know that Prior Lake also, I think, presented this to their council with some of the changes with their project.
They don't care about it.
Getting into project costs and funding, this is a pretty significant project. The Scott County 2035, 2025, 2034 Draft Transportation Investment Program, or TIP, programs this project for a total project cost of $37.5 million. That includes $2 million for design, $10 million for right-of-way acquisition. Again, because they're preserving that principal arterial corridor, there's a very large right-of-way that needs to be acquired to construct these improvements, and construction is programmed for $25.5 million. Construction's programmed between the years 2027 and 2028, with design happening basically over the next year and right-of-way in the year of 2026. In the county's draft TIP, they've included $1.015 million of funding from the city of Shakopee for our share. Now, that cost is calculated based on a 50-50 split of the trail and pedestrian improvements only along the project. So, essentially, they're not requesting funding from the city of Shakopee for the roadway improvements, they're requesting funding for half of the trail costs that would be split between Scott County and city of Shakopee costs. It's a little bit different from their cost participation policy because this is somewhat in between limbo, between a principal arterial and a minor arterial roadway. If we looked at it just as a minor arterial, our share would be much higher. Our share is very limited to what those trail improvements are.
The county is not following their own policy?
They're making an exception with this project and deviating slightly because it's somewhat of an interesting project that it's not as black and white.
Taking away our argument.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna hold off until you get done with your presentation.
That's fine, I only have one more slide left.
Okay.
So, next steps and schedule. So, tonight, I'm here before you simply to collect your feedback so I can share it with Scott County and their staff and their board, so that they can make decisions moving forward, especially going into that open house. If our council has concerns, I want to make sure that they're aware of it before they go meet with our public as well. Again, the county will host that public open house sometime in the winter of 2025. They've alluded to January, but potentially that could slide between January or February. I know they haven't selected a date yet. And then moving forward, they would go into design in '25 and '26, acquire the necessary right-of-way in 2026, and construction in '27 and '28. And I'm more than happy to stand for questions.
Mr. Jordan, I noticed there weren't any slides talking about the ownership of property. Oh, looky there.
I figured you might ask that question.
So, it's my understanding that 50% of the land that's in the city of Shakopee is actually owned by the SMSC that affects this project. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Well, it's...
The SMSCs...
That's not correct, and I'm gonna tell you why, and some of my comments, and I guess I can just go ahead and start with my comments.
Okay, I was just saying that I didn't see the SMSC's contribution.
The reason it's not correct is because if you take a larger snapshot, one of the arguments that's being made is that this is gonna be a principal arterial for all this population that's coming this way, when in fact, we are building more out to the west.
West, yeah.
Okay, so, and even if the population wanted to build on 14 and go to 17, that too is largely owned by the Medawakatin, which is not included in the 50%. So, actually, the impact on Marshall Road at 14 and Marshall Road, or 17, coming from 14 is gonna be minimal because a lot of that land is not developable. So, the other comments that I had was, when Shakopee's not funding this project other than trails, the county is using the county transportation tax money, and Shakopee residents are probably the largest contributors to that sales tax pool, as the largest city in Scott County. So, yeah, it might not be coming from our tax levy, but it's coming from our residents and businesses that pay that in Shakopee. I don't like the fact that they want to take some of these neighborhoods and just lock them, and I'm really concerned more so with, what was the one closest to 82?
That's Eaglewood.
That one there, they're gonna run them over to the 82 roundabout, that's probably the most dangerous intersection on this stretch roadway currently. So, we're gonna force some residents down into this, and this is gonna be the busiest out of all of the intersections. I don't know how many head-on crashes we've had on this road. I can imagine there's a lot, you know, there's crashes at 14, there's probably most at 82. It's just the most populated. It's got the hill on the south that you're coming down, you've gotta turn it coming from the north that you can't really see from 82 around the corner. So, you know, I get trying to make some improvements. I'm not sure I'm sold on this particular plan, especially for locking some of these residents like that, that's not good. And I think the population estimates, I would be more apt to say that we're gonna see more of a southern movement on the west side than from what we currently have in Shakopee using Marshall Road going south. And I get the old 09, I was here for that, that concept was based on a... And I get the old 09, I was here for that, that concept was, was based on a lot of different scenarios that just don't play out today. One is, you know, you had this thought that you were gonna have more development going south on Marshall Road, but the land has been sold, also on 14. So, so when you look at the west side of Shakopee, there's a potential for some of that traffic to come up 14, but they're not gonna travel all the way across to Marshall Road to go south when they can turn on Marystown Road and go to 282. So, I don't know what the answer is for the north-south, for the county's plan. And I think 13 tying in with 282 plays a lot into this. And maybe that's an option to be looking at, maybe we, we do a east-west that connects to 13, 13-south will take you to 282, take you south all the way to 19, to another east-west. So, you know, there, it's a state highway where there's other funding sources for expansion. I don't know what Prior Lake's position is on that, but that's my preliminary thoughts on it. Mr. Whitey?
This road doesn't meet the criteria for a principal arterial, so it doesn't meet the standard of having the limited access at the one mile. It should have a full access at these roads. That's my point. I know in the future, I don't see this, I think it was premature to make this the principal arterial for the county. I think we've moved that to the west with our development and with what the SMSC has bought all this property. So to me, the, the north-south is gonna be where we're building it out for traffic patterns. I think this needs to go back to a full new study.
And Councilmember Whitey, I can address some of your comments there. When the county continues to look at this as a principal arterial north-south roadway, they're envisioning that it's combined with trunk highway 13, where trunk highway 13 would be turned over to the state, or I'm sorry, County Highway 17 would be turned over to the state and trunk highway 13 would be returned to the county. That's in the county's 2040 transportation plan. Prior Lake also has worked on annexation agreements with the Spring Lake Township, where potentially there's more development happening to the south along County Highway 17 that was part of these forecasts as well. And then, I would agree that we're definitely not seeing the same level of traffic and traffic impacts based on the fact that SMSC has purchased a lot of land in the area and it won't be developed, but there will be more development to the south of Shakopee that will increase traffic along this roadway. And the county is looking at a Phase 2 project, which would include making some of the changes at the trunk highway 13, 282 intersection, to realign more of that traffic north-south rather than an east-west focus to continue east on trunk highway 13. And then lastly, to that point, is the county, in their 10-year transportation plan, they do include constructing an east-west roadway, essentially connecting Dakota County to 169, which would connect to Dakota County Highway 70, and I can't remember which Scott County roadway that is, but essentially, they do have a plan to construct that east-west-south roadway in this area to provide additional traffic capacity east-west as well. Mr. Mayor, to your point there...
They have 282 already.
They do, and I think there's a missing link that provides more direct connections to other principal arterias regionally, and I think they're looking more region-wide how those accesses connect.
I just can't support cutting off these neighborhoods.
Yeah. And, and Councilmember Whitey, to your point, the county bases their policies on their future designations of their roadways. Given that this is a future principal arterial, they make their access control decisions based off that. When we say it doesn't meet the criteria of a principal arterial roadway, there isn't, there isn't as cut and dry when that, when that change happens between a minor arterial and a principal arterial.
It's when the county wants it to happen.
I think, I would agree, and I would say currently today in how they're building it, they're not constructing it to a principal arterial, so maybe there is some negotiations between how those accesses change, and could there be a compromise between the principal arterial and the minor arterial to provide some better connectivity and maybe increase some of that access control, or decrease some of that access control that they're looking at? So getting that feedback from our council and sharing it with them definitely is important, because that'll help the county in making those decisions.
If you put that ownership map back up, you can see why they're, why they're making those properties more undesirable. If you want to look at it from a conspiracy point of view, just fill in the, fill in the orange there, and there you go. Make those more desirable, lower, lower value, easier to pick up. I don't see, see any value to Shakopee with this project.
Me either.
There's, there's value to having it.
There's value in 20, 30 years, but not to the neighborhoods that are gonna have to deal with the issues.
There's, there's clear value in addressing the 82 intersection, there, from a safety standpoint, absolutely, right? There's some value, you know, years ago, they realigned 14, so instead of being at an angle, they made it straight, so it's a T, which made it a little safer, and at some point, you know, there's gonna be some value in making that intersection safer. How you do that is up for debate, whether it's a stoplight or a roundabout or whatever. But I don't think, I think, I think two roundabouts, 14 and 82, would go a long way to slowing some of this traffic on occasion. It's almost like a mandatory yield sign, because it would actually slow traffic down for a period of time. By the time they built up their speed, they would be doing it again at 14, or vice versa, 14 to 82. I, I just don't, I drive this road, I just don't see the, the only issue I have with this road is that 82, I look at 14, slow down, somebody's gonna pull out in front of you, that does happen, shouldn't, but it does. So that would be an improvement if they wanted to put a roundabout there, but I, I'm not convinced that there's gonna be enough Shakopee drive for this kind of major, major revamping and hardship to all these properties at this time.
Mm-hmm.
That's my comments. Trail's a whole nother issue.
Right.
Like the trail.
You know, I, you know, I'm wondering, you know, what, what is the cost to Shakopee for the trail portion of this? It's like 1.1 million, I think it was?
Mr. Mayor, it was 1.01 million, yes.
Does that include all the tunnels?
Mr. Mayor, that's correct. So the way that their funding is split is that basically, we'd pay for, let's call it one trail on the east side, the county would pay for the trail on the west side, and we'd split the cost of the tunnel half and half. I, I believe that their cost estimates are based on just one pedestrian underpass. They're showing two at this location, and the reason why they're showing two is that if the Marion Junction Trail ends up on the south side of County Highway 14, then they would want pedestrians to be able to cross under the tunnel to get to the north, to get to the other tunnel. If the Marion Junction Trail ends up on the north side of County Highway 14, they would only look at constructing one tunnel. So I believe that their estimates that they gave us are based on just the scenario of one pedestrian underpass at this intersection, which the city and county would share 50/50. Mr. Mayor, to your point on the benefits to the city of Shakopee, there is a demonstrated safety issue along this corridor. It's, it's noted at County Highway 14 and County Highway 82. I mentioned that the crash rates exceed the, the critical crash rate, which demonstrate that there is an accident problem. So the county is prioritizing investments to improve safety along this corridor, and that safety improvement are those roundabouts at that intersection, which have demonstrated that they will reduce the severe and fatal crash rates at high-speed roadways. So those investments, I believe, are targeted to address the safety issues. They have, I will share that they have significantly scaled back what they've recommended at these intersections. There was a period of time where they recommended interchanges to be constructed initially with this first phase, rather than burdening taxpayers and constituents with those costs that probably aren't justified. They have scaled back to construct, to propose roundabouts at these intersections. Then when we look at the segment severity, which is essentially crashes along the roadway not tied at intersections, essentially, they're right at that critical rate, which shows that there's potentially a safety issue, but more than likely, there's a safety issue. And again, those are the run-off-the-road accidents. So proposing dividing the roadway but keeping it one lane in each direction improves that situation, it addresses some of those safety issues along the roadway. There could be opportunities to provide better access while still dividing the roadway, which you could include left-turn lanes along County Highway 17 and, and accesses where you can make left outs at our local roadways as well, by still addressing that segment severity. So I do believe that there are potentially other solutions that could be recommended here that meet the goals that the county is trying to address at this project, where Shakopee and the region would see benefits by improving safety along this corridor.
Can I ask now?
Go ahead.
Mr. Jordan, anything else do you see that we could do, other than you taking back our feedback and letting them know that we disagree with this, and we'd like them to revise it or go back to the drawing board? Anything else we can do to...
Thank you, council. I, I would, I would believe potentially a workshop with county commissioners could be beneficial to discuss some of our questions and issues and issues with the project, and really try to have them understand where we're coming from, from a local perspective with the project. I've definitely shared my concerns with county staff to these same points that you've, that you've presented tonight. And really, what it comes is, this is a staff recommendation at this point, had, there's been no board action at this time by the county. I do feel like getting feedback from our community members is important as well, so ensuring that our residents do show up to the open house, whether they show up to the open house or submit comments to county staff as well, the more information and feedback we can give and justification for why we have these concerns, and trying to go back to the drawing board to maybe have a compromise while still addressing some of their needs.
Mr. Whitey?
Maybe the opportunity for some frontage road, I don't know if there's space for that out there, maybe in a couple spaces to get up to one of the other roundabouts, something like that, I don't know.
Well, one of, one of the options is, you know, if you, if you spaced these, and I'm thinking regular roundabouts, but, but I, I mean, if you want to bypass, I don't know how that plays into this, that's your job as an engineer, but a standard, when I think of back-to-back standard roundabouts, even if they were 14 and 82, that distance isn't long enough to have the kind of speeds between there, that would be an issue for Eaglewood.
Eaglewood.
Okay? It's, it's just, it's just not a long enough space for that kind of speed to happen, so that's not, that doesn't justify closing that off, in my mind.
Marshall, you're coming around that corner a little bit, so maybe...
And, and you've got 42 right there, correct? Where you come underneath the bridge and you take the left?
Yeah, that's over here, yeah.
Yep. But it applies to all of them, you don't, you're not gonna put these people out that, that far on something like this, that's, yeah, no.
Yeah, and, and Mayor and Council, there are potential other issues besides just changing some of the access control. On Marshall Lane, if you continue north, there potentially is the opportunity to construct a local roadway to connect to the neighborhoods which connect up to Jennifer Lane, which would access County Highway 78. If you continue north, I don't have that part of the image here, but there could be opportunities to connect some of the local roadways, which would provide alternative outlets for the neighborhood too, that could be considered as part of these improvements. The county does own a piece of property that this road ultimately could extend to and connect to. It would require acquiring right-of-way from private property owners to do that, but there are alternate solutions we could look at outside of just even changing left-turn lanes and access control on County Highway 17. So if we do get creative and work with the county, we can recommend reasonable solutions that could at least be reviewed, vetted out, and potentially incorporated as part of the project.
Appreciate it.
Anybody else? Okay. Anything else?
No, but thank you, Mayor and Council, for the feedback. I'm open to talk about this at any time, too, if you want to dive into looking at the layouts more, and I'm happy to have more conversations, and if you want me to coordinate with the county, too, I'm happy to stand for anything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, Liz on reports. Which side went first last time? I think we're starting over here this time.
The only thing I have is just this afternoon, or this morning, I attended the ribbon-cutting for the new Infinity Plus Credit Union that opened out in South Bridge today.
Very good.
That's it.
Yep. Councilor Contreras?
Yep, thank you, Mayor. So on November 21st, I attended the We Are Water Fashion Show at the Hokatati Cultural Center that the Medawakatin, so I think it was the first one that they've done, if I'm not mistaken, and it was pretty cool, some really nice, very pretty designs, actually. So I was very happy to go to that.
Very good, cool. Anything else? Mr. Whitey?
On November 20th, we had the MVTA meeting, we passed our capital debt service budget and cost of living adjustment for our employees, and made some changes to some of our positions and things like that, but other than that, that's all I have.
Mr. Whitey, has been any discussion about, I know there's a push for the, I don't know what the rail line is called, but comes down through to Mankato, would that hurt BRT funding for the southern opt-outs like ourselves?
I don't think that's been looked at, I know what you're talking about, the rail to...
Mankato?
Roger, no, I'm not sure it was Mankato, I thought it was...
Yeah, there's one that goes down to Mankato.
Okay, that hasn't been talked about.
Okay. Anything else?
Nope.
Mr. Delaney?
Let's see, I also attended the SMSC's fashion show, it was really, pretty good and interesting, that's my first fashion I've ever been to. It was better than I expected, though. Hockey Day volunteer signup was yesterday, I hope they have another one planned, that was at the Golf Garage, I believe, that's, that little, that's the name of the place. So definitely sign up for that, I know it's gonna be in our, our city in, I think, January, so definitely want to volunteer, make sure you get out and volunteer. Had the SPU meeting yesterday. Just a couple of highlights. AMI, they've installed 17,350 electrical meters, they expect to be 100% installed February 25th, water 8,281, and they should have 100% installed May 25, May, May 2025, February 2025. As far as opt-out outside, only one resident has actually opted outside and had that installation put in. I think they did put the Christmas tree lights up downtown, it was announced in the meeting. Let's see, 169 Coalition Winter Meeting is Wednesday. It is hosted and sponsored by the SMSC, Beathery Link Event Center, oh, excuse me. We'll talk about updates on our priorities, legislative updates, we'll hear from those men dot county, and SMSC presentation will also be there. And that's it.
Very good. Did you say they put, they opted out to put a meter on the outside, water meter?
Yes, you can get the opt-out side, electric meter is already outside, but you can actually run your water meter to connect outside, too. There's only been one resident that's signed in.
How does it not freeze?
It's just a meter that they can read from.
Oh.
It's a communication piece, yeah.
Oh. All right. My report, attended the intergovernment working group of Prior Lake, Shakopee, Scott County, and the Medawakatin. Andrew Craig was there with a check for the Medawakatin for some solar initiative. I guess the, probably the top two takeaways, other than everybody talking about their various little projects that they got going on, was county talking trash was a hot one. The incinerator in Minneapolis.
The HERC.
They want to shut that down, not because it's polluting, because apparently it's clean, but...
Carbon.
Politics, political reasons, apparently. But where does that capacity then go? You know, a lot of talk about having outlying counties, Scott County, including having dumps and stuff like this, and don't know how that's gonna play out, but that was one topic. The other was the Medawakatin's new, or if I call it, go figure, you know, waiting on the railroad for some railroad crossing improvements. Sometime in January, I just had to ask if they designated a year to that January, it might be 2055 or something. I did offer to go out with Tribal Chairman Miller in the middle of the night and put our own arms up, but we probably won't be doing that now that it's out there and not the right thing to do, so. I did attend the Infinity Plus Financial Credit Union, talked with the CEO and their financial guru, inverted curves and bond yields, and great conversation, actually, I couldn't get the combination to the safe, so, no. Councilor Lara was there helping me trying to get the combination to the safe, too. He didn't get it either, so we were unsuccessful. It was a great, it's great to have them in Shakopee, they're employee-owned, and they've got 200 and some locations, and they're just in Minnesota, I think it was. I could be wrong on that, but anyway, welcome to Shakopee, we welcomed in, welcome them, welcome them to Shakopee, it's good to see them out there in that area, and nice building, and I'm sure they're gonna be very successful, so if you want to make any investments or take out loans or whatever, you've got more options. That's my report. Mr. Reynolds, what do you got?
Nothing for me, sir.
All right. City bill list, 12A.
No questions for me.
13, other business. Mr. Whitey?
A couple other business. One is a reminder, I want to remind folks, ICE is not safe, need four inches to... Need four inches to walk on. And a question about, are we flooding our ice rinks?
Yes.
Okay, just checking. I haven't been out there yet.
I think that although we're attempting, the weather this weekend is probably going to affect our ability to actually accomplish that.
Yeah, correct.
And then, I did want to mention the Holiday Fest. Did you mention that?
I was gonna do that, but go ahead.
This weekend, and then
Saturday, eleven to seven?
Two to six.
Two to six.
We were right the first time.
Tree lighting, fireworks, lot of fun.
All right.
Five-thirty, I'm sure at six.
As far as other business, I think this council should discuss, after staff looks into it, the vehicles on the roads. Whether it's pocket bikes on the sidewalks, e-bikes on the trails, it's supposed to be non-motorized. I don't know where that one fits. I know we have a golf cart policy, ATVs are on the roads. I would rather have a discussion about some of these electric bikes and e-bikes and pocket bikes before somebody gets killed. I don't want that to drive a discussion.
Well, we can have that conversation. We certainly can. There's a lot of state laws that we have to follow, and unfortunately, some of them, state laws are, you know, right on the edge.
I'd like to know them. I don't know what we
Forty-nine, forty-nine cc electric, can do this, that, and the other thing, this age. I mean, they've really opened it up. And, you know, if you got a forty, above forty-nine cc, then it's supposed to be licensed lights and all these other things. And it's really hard sometimes to tell what the actual cc is of an electric-powered unit when it's gotta be converted.
And and, I mean, it all comes down to enforcement. I, you know, I, in my neighborhood, there there are non-motorized vehicles or motorized vehicles that aren't licensed that, you know, but, you know, I could call in and say, come here. And by the time you do that,
They're gone.
They're gone. I mean, it's all about enforcement.
Sure, but if we have a policy to enforce, would be one start, I guess.
Well, but then you're back to, okay, what's your staffing model? What's the priorities?
Sure.
What's the priorities? You know?
Yeah, I just still want, like I mentioned, I don't wanna have an issue drive our conversation on it.
Well, we've got people driving cars that say stop signs, traffic lights, and everything else is just a recommended inconvenience.
We can certainly bring it up for a topic discussion. Chief Tate and I have talked about this on multiple occasions in the last year. You know, you don't have to be a motorized bike to be going fast on a regular pedal bicycle and have a collision and get hurt.
True.
And and it's like, well, how do you draw the lines? How do you give your people, first of all, you know, you're gonna then have them policing the trails for bicycles? You know, that's, so obviously, that's an issue.
Well, this started a while back because I asked staff in the police department to put the rules out there online, and they did.
Yeah.
And
Dig them up.
And the goal was to try to educate people on what the rules are. Now, whether they follow them or not is a whole nother ballgame, but it is it is a concern in all the neighborhoods. How do you? You can't snap a picture or a video of a son that doesn't have a license plate and not required to have one.
Some of the stuff you see, it really makes you concerned and think, you know, we better talk about that. Anyway, that's all I had.
All right. Anything else? Item fourteen? Councilor Contreras?
I'll make a motion to adjourn to December seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, seven P.M.
Second?
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Whiting?
Sure.
Discussion on the motion? Discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed. We're adjourned.